Reiterate that the kindergarten registration at the elementary buildings will be held in April. And this is posted on the website, but if I can just say publicly that the kindergarten registration for Mountain View Elementary School is April sixteenth and seventeenth. For Lake Trove Elementary School, it's April eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. And kindergarten registration for Bagley Elementary School is April twenty-third and twenty-fourth. But again, those days are listed only district website. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Educational programs, Dr. Perrin.
Uh, just, uh, we received our final allocation for, for the eleven, twelve school, for eleven, twelve school year. Uh, we received a reduction of eleven thousand dollars from our original allocation. Uh, we were able to make up for that in various places throughout that budget. Uh, they, they're telling us that due to, due to allocation from, from Washington, we will not have our initial allocation for next year until late April. This morning, uh, in your packets, there's information, uh, regarding the chefs who were here today with our sophomore class, uh, chefs Tim and John from Parkhurst and Eaton Park this morning. At seven thirty this morning, began making stir fry and salad. And so our sophomores enjoyed the, uh, those opportunities. But I will tell you, the stir fry was very good.
You didn't have a salad?
I did not have a salad, so I can't speak to that. Uh, Dr. Teck had mentioned kindergarten registration earlier. Uh, you can probably hear there's been a lot of transition activities, uh, happening this year in regard to kindergarten. More, uh, we've really picked up the efforts in that way due to the Yadda Way and Yadda Way grant. And it's been really a team effort between, uh, Mrs. Philander, our kind of one staff, our kindergarten staff, uh, our principals, and some of our local childcare providers and preschools. Uh, on, on twenty-seventh of February, they had a great transition activity meeting that was packed, uh, with most of our kindergarten teachers, all of our principals and, and, and kind of parents, so. And there's also other upcoming events, uh, family story nights at each elementary school and some preschool locations that will occur. That's all I had at this point.
Thank you very much, Dr. Perrin. On your agenda for next week will be, um, a resolution, uh, for permission to host the two thousand and twelve Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Senior High Honors Choir Festival, November second through the third, two thousand and twelve. Also on your agenda for next week will be, um, an item to approve, an out-of-state student trip. Um, Mrs. Popelia and her eleven students, um, are going to the Penn Mall plant in Ohio on Thursday, March twenty-ninth for the Young Engineers Pro Program. So we need to approve that as out-of-state. Um, we will also be approving, um, tuition students next year, um, one from Derry and, um, uh, one from Ligonier. Is that right for two thousand and one or two thousand and twelve?
That's her.
Okay, it's her.
It's her.
Okay, so we got it for our next school year. Okay. And then we'll be approving one from Ligonier for the following school year. That will be on your agenda for next week. Now, another one, also, uh, three, you have three for, three actually, and then four. Let me see, make sure that's it. Um, three for, three from Ligonier and one from Derry on your, uh, to approve for next week. Item number ten, a request for a new music ensemble, um, will be, um, Senior High School Women's Choir. A request by Josh Gordon. And Dr. Perrin has some information in her write-up too for you, um, for the request for the music ensemble you wish to approve.
Absolutely. I can talk a little bit about that. Essentially, uh, our core programs contain many more female students, uh, than, than male students. Chamber Choir, it, it's for those students with, with some advanced musical skills. To maintain and integrate that group, you need a balance of male, male and female. However, we have a lot of talented female musicians and the, and the intent of this program is to allow them to, to take another level of course, uh, to, to give them the opportunity to, to further develop what they're kind of. And then these are, are higher performing musical students. Uh, we will use existing staff, like high school movements, that then involve some, uh, Virginia High School, uh, musical staff picking up a piano lab essentially. So it's just a shift in, in staff responsibilities. Um, Mr. Ben Murray will assume responsibility for that group as he does, uh, most of our core programs. But, uh, they do, it's a great opportunity to begin, uh, doing a wider range of opportunities to students in terms of these performances, so.
Question, on the material that they were given, on that, um, it had a women's choir already. Am I correct in assuming that that is a proposal?
It is a proposal, uh, because of the, the scheduling timeline that had it, had it occur, that when this was put in, it was put into the document pending board approval. And so, uh, it had to go out there just because of the scheduling timeline, uh, that, that process was before this board meeting, so.
The women's choir are the only new ones, correct?
That is the only new.
The other three listed are already out of state.
Exactly.
Okay. That will be on your agenda next week, um, for approval. Um, also on your agenda next week, item number three, Dr. Solis is asking us to approve a contract for physical therapy called Therapy In Motion. And, uh, do you have any comments on that, Dr. Solis?
We had a company, uh, therapy source that was providing physical therapy for a student who receives instruction in the home. Um, the therapist was no longer available, um, we allowed therapy source. Uh, they expended a lot of time to find, to find a replacement and they had not, so I began to look for another source for this physical therapy. It's not easy to find therapists that will go into the home to perform this physical therapy, but I think that's enough.
One last question.
Sure.
We have one specific.
This is one student that receives instruction in the home. This student would receive an hour of physical therapy a week from this person.
Is, are we reimbursed from?
At a fifty percent rate, yes.
This is great, I'm gonna stay.
It's, um, federal access.
Any other questions? Okay, that would be on your agenda. Also for next week, item number twelve is to remind the curriculum committee that we have a meeting next Tuesday prior to the executive session at five fifteen P M. And it centers student behavior. So please mark your calendars for that. And that ends my report and I'll turn finance over to Mrs. Hall.
Thank you. Uh, the treasurer's report contains that usual will be on the agenda. Budgetary transfers, um, are in your packet. Item number four, and those are self-explanatory, and they will be on the agenda as well. There is a list of grants and donations which we will go over by numbers, uh, next week as we, uh, have them on, in the resolution on the agenda. We haven't changed, uh, the treasurer, uh, the, we haven't changed the First National Bank and they're, um, appointing a member of the staff at First National Bank as our treasurer. That would be, um, that's into a, uh, packet, that is number five. And that would be on the agenda. Uh, there's a, item number six is the faculty, uh, pad, uh, we, we need to improve paying for that. That's on the agenda. And, uh, item number seven is about the electricity procurement. Mr. Russell, would you want to go with that?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Russell. Um, we, uh, uh, work with a company called Keytech Center here several months ago. Greg Camerata was here for Keytech to talk about our participation in, in the energy procurement program. Um, another service that Keytech assists us with is electricity procurement. Uh, back in April two thousand and ten, uh, the board, uh, approved locking in a rate, um, of a little over six cents per kilowatt hour for a three-year agreement, which was a significant reduction, um, to, uh, you know, our electricity costs and a savings of around, I believe, ninety thousand dollars per year reduction in those costs. Um, they've been continuing to look forward to seeing how, you know, what rates are looking like. Uh, they dropped to a seven or below recently, um, so they, uh, contacted the school district and we locked in a rate for additional two years starting in April two thousand and thirteen and extending to May two thousand and fifteen, um, at a little over its, uh, point zero five six cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, we estimate savings of, of roughly fifty-five thousand dollars a year, uh, locking that rate in. Um, and it'll be, there's a, there's a report in your packet, uh, item number seven. But it's, uh, it was a pretty good, pretty good, uh, situation for the district, so, uh, we, we locked that down. Any questions?
And we should just point out again that whenever, uh, schools were surveyed, uh, it was pointed out to us that unlike a lot of, uh, school districts that are surveyed, we have very low energy costs and those steps have already been taken and so that has already been placed.
Okay, thank you, Deanna. Uh, we're working with the Lincoln Group that's been coming through and analyzing, you know, our, our operating systems. And that is one of the comments they've made, uh, the cost that we pay per, per utility is extremely low compared to, to, uh, other, um, schools and municipalities they've worked with. And I believe it's because of the, uh, consortiums that we've participated in and the group purchasing we've participated in as well as the, uh, the relationship we've had. So it's a good thing to mention.
And the last two items are the minutes of the final committee meeting are, um, that's information. And the next one is committee meeting will be Wednesday, April fourth at ten A M. with the administration's authority.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Delga. Well, Mr. Property Supply, Mrs. Kozar.
Yes, um.
Will we give a project update?
Okay.
Excellent. I just want to understand, you say you should all have a one-page report from your folders, um, from Hank. And, uh, we have had a few meetings, uh, thus far, since the last board's approval. And so Hank is really going to give you an update as far as, um, what has been going on. But as well to let all of you know that he will be here every month at the committee of the whole, uh, to update the progress of the projects. Um, and as well as his attendance at the property supply committee meetings, which really, um, Heidi and so on are in charge of. So, um, Hank, I don't know if you want to go through what's on the sheet and see if there's any questions?
Sure, I can do that. Um, to start with the schedule, we've, we've been working through the schematic design process. We're continuing on schedule and tracking to, to finish construction of the entire project fall of two thousand and thirteen. That's the, the schedule we're working on and seem to be going through it that way. We, uh, schematic, like I said, schematic design is in progress and we're scheduled to complete that this month. We met with the property and supply committee and reviewed the, the schematic plans. We had several meetings with administration, uh, to go over the plans. We have actually another meeting scheduled for tomorrow, for refining the plans at each meeting and, and starting to look at some schematic elevations now to, to go along with the, with the board plans. That seems to be moving right along pretty nicely. We, uh, the survey has been approved and been underway. The, the schedule with that is, I'm told, uh, we should see a preliminary survey by the end of next week and the final survey by the end of the following week, which falls right into our schedule. The survey is an important piece because we can't move much past the schematic design until we have a survey so that we know exactly what the grades are, what's gotten out there. The survey is also a key item to allow us to do our geotechnical report. Kind of all tied together. The, the geotechnical report really shouldn't be done until the survey's completed because we need to really have a, a firm grasp of where we're locating different items on the site so that when the drilling rig comes out, it's drawing the holes in the proper places. So, we, we started with the, I've got some preliminary costs for the geotechnical report and hopefully we will be coming to board in April to ask them to approve, going, approve a, uh, geotechnical report to be completed. And that should take quite a month and that will fall right into the rest of the schedule. The other thing that we've been talking about is a, um, animated computer rendering. I guess there's been, there's been some, uh, some, some money donated to, to, uh, do a computer rendering of the proposed project in hope of fundraising. Things along those lines and that should start really once we get into design development. We don't want to start that too soon because we want to make sure that the rendering has some similarities with what will actually be built in the end. And if we start too soon, the project tends to change and then people will see one thing and have something else to build, so we don't want that. That's basically where we are, that and is, any questions?
Do you think, when, when, when will we start to see the preliminary budgets? When, when will that start? What month are we looking at, sort of?
I plan on it, at the end of schematic design, I'll, I'll do another estimate. Right now we have, there's, there's an estimate out there that I did at the very beginning. And then I'll refine that at the end of schematic design and then, so at the end of March, I'll refine that and get a little bit more involved. And then at the end of the design, design development, I'll refine it even more. And then once we get into construction documents, it will be more refined. So, you'll probably see at least three, if not four, versions of estimate before we actually go on to it.
So at design development, at the end of the design development, the, the construction box will be how far completed at that point?
At the end of design development, the construction documents are typically about?
Twenty?
Somewhere between twenty and thirty percent from twenty. We have the, we have the plans pretty well done, but we don't have everything to mention.
Right, I understand that, okay. So that's a good number, that would be a good number for us.
Great.
Thank you.
One other quick question, if we decide we're going to get a phase one bunch of the barbed rig? Do we have to have a phase one for our whole bunch of the barbed rig?
Um, we don't know that for sure yet. I'm, I'm hoping the survey will shed some, so I'd like to have to see what types of things may come up with the survey. At this point, I'm not sure what we require, but, uh, I'll have a much better answer for you next month.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. What is the base line?
It's like an environmental study, like, you know, you know, somebody dumped, before we were here, dumped our old crowd over there, or, you know, walking along with a dig or a mine somewhere, and watch stuff like that. Did you do that? Just don't want Hank, don't want Hank taking foundations. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just don't want Hank taking foundations and finding out some barrels from.
And, and when people are out doing the survey, they're, they're walking the site and they'll, they'll see if there's things that look like May go down that path or not. Very good idea.
Wow, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Moving on. Item number nine is the property supply meeting minutes. On the agenda, item video things of, um, two thousand and twelve, thirteen general school supplies. We'll have a whole harness agreement for the grid light block in the Wild Stadium, which is June twenty-second, twenty-third this year. Um, we will, on the agenda, item for permission to authorize H VAC maintenance at the administration building. And our next program is planning new staple for, which is a change. It's normally a surest day. So it's a Wednesday and it's a two-fifth. Thank you, Mrs. Kozar.
Sue.
Yeah.
Hey, Ned, just, are we signing the contract? Yeah, are we signing the contracts with the surveyor, signing the contracts with the geotechnical, or is he signing and it's passed through?
Um, we signed the contract with the surveyor. Uh, that was approved, I believe, at the, uh, February board meeting. And, and the geotechnical, we haven't done anything with that.
And the only thing on the geotechnical is, is the problem with surveys, when they do their insurance certificate, when they give you a fact, you, you know, you should probably have him and whoever else he has, name as official insured. And then if the school district is, if the school district is being, you know, isn't insured, then probably should have a foundation as official insured as well. So if somebody, if the drilling rig rolls over, the hell goes on, somebody or, or, we, we have to cover this through them before they come.
Okay, sure, follow through.
Thank you. Anything else? Student activities and recreation, Dr. Loughlin.
I think the first slide was a, here, see the recommendation item that will be, um, here in the auditorium, March twenty eighth, seven P M. The next athletic committee meeting is March twenty-first, six P M. Athletic office. And I would just like to add that the junior high musical was wonderful while active in the ensemble this week.
Good point. Thank you. Intermediates relations, Dr. Loughlin.
Chris, I, uh, Intermunity Parks Recreation, Minnesota, in fact. Also a letter supports, supporting the A P R's application for a D C N O grant for the Margaret Park or the Parkland Park in the crib. This part of the application is for us to say, like.
They're asking us to write a letter, um, to submit with their grant application, um, they need seven letters. And the first page of the handout is what was sent and then the payment back with the weather that was sent to, um, the country part. All the entities who, um, send, uh, who belong to the environmental agreement after I've left the support for the D C N O grant.
And Dr. Pepper, I have a piece of information about the Penn State four-H entry meeting that farmers have promised.
Sure, just, um, I was contacted by Rich Gradyak and I think some of you know Rich, who is our school-based probation officer for juvenile probation in West Hornover County. And juvenile probation has partnered with Penn State four-H, um, they have received the grant to, um, have a youth and families with promised mentoring program, which actually parallels with our development last time that we had at the school district. Graver Lake Tro was just targeting and asked to meet. Um, the exciting thing about this is, um, it gives our youth, our principals, our counselors and teachers the opportunity to refer youth who may benefit from a mentoring program. The program components include the mentoring, we're volunteer mentors, um, our training and, uh, background checks are done through four-H and juvenile probation. And they work directly with the youth to build those academic and social skills through the developmental assets. Um, there are four-H activities as well as family night outs, uh, family nights out, um, that are funded through the grant offering. So, um, we're very happy, we're excited to do this. This program extends through the summer, which is key and integral, um, in keeping our youth engaged in meaningful activities, uh, during the downtime. And actually, I will be meeting with an individual from probation tomorrow, um, to discuss this in greater detail, but we're excited and, um, hopefully we'll be off, it's up and running, um, in the summer.
I'd just like to add, I put at each one of your offices this, um, annual report, report for intermunity parks and recreation, so please, um, look through that and, um, it tells about all of our programs, almost as successful than they were once the first pictures came out. Anything else, Dr. Loughlin?
Nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. The intermediate unit, um, you have, uh, a summary of the meeting minutes, um, which is item number twelve in your packet. Next week on your agenda will be, uh, a resolution to approve the west lawn of intermediate unit budget. You will have received a copy of that, so. And, um, the other thing, you all should have received a ballot in the mail to vote for, um, these people. There is a mistake on the ballot. So they called me in and asked me if I would, um, list a mistake for you so they don't have to send out duplicate ballots. The mistake is in, um, part three. There are, um, two people there to be elected and it says one to be elected, that's actually two to be elected. So you're actually allowed to vote for two in part three. Part one, part two, and part four are okay as stated. It's part three, you're allowed to vote for two. And please know that you have to turn these in, Connie has to validate them and they have to be sent in to the intermediate unit by Connie. So if you could, um, they have to be in right Monday, April second, so if you could bring them back next week with your, um, I think it should, it should just kind of matter of protocol. If this is done, I don't think it really does a whole lot, but, you know. Please fill it in and we can send it back.
I can really feel so.
You know, all four of them, you're, there's two to be elected and you're allowed to vote for two. There's one to be elected, you're allowed to vote for one. There's two to be elected, you can elect for two. And then there's four, you can elect for four, so, you know.
Lawscape.
But I think it's all, because they have, have paperwork. Fill it in, bring it back. I mean, that is my report on the, uh, intermediate unit and, um, with that, you, the, the operating committee, Mrs. Kozar.
Yes, um, you'll have a, you have a copy of the summary of our last meeting, which was the twenty-second of February, February thirteenth. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that Robert Bond, a senior, early-grad senior high school, was the student of the month in February. And he is in the Computer Engineering Technology Program, which is, um, he has a four-point-O GPA, W C T C. And he plans to pursue a career in network engineering with a B S in information technology.
I think it's great, incredible. Very exciting. I was so impressed when they had, when we had the, the Christmas thing and they did the presentation. How many of those students won for a certification that really had the grades?
It's a very proud thing, right, that they did that. Great secretary.
I'm impressed with students. Thank you. We'll call C P S A and the N O E A's office as well. Thank you. Thank you. Transportation, Dr. Moffat.
Uh, thank you. The, uh, manager of, uh, item fourteen, uh, transportation. Uh, I was in the middle of the ten, I'm provided, but, uh, most important thing is we're very lucky to have, uh, Transponder software, the demonstration. Transponder software, the next meeting, or, uh, I don't know if it's going to be made in the athletic office. It is, if you're putting it to the mirrors, it's, uh, better and cheaper than our current software. Where everyone's frustration shows why. Uh, everyone's invited. If you're going to attend, I suggest you contact Mr. Myers. Uh, we usually have meetings in the athletic office, but if they had other guests, we'd have to do that, so if you want to come, uh, tomorrow. That concludes it.
Thank you, Dr. Moffat. And now to Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. Um, the meeting minutes are in your packet under item number fifteen, um, earlier we talked about, which, where we're heading down, um, as far as the, um, trying to move to the twenty-one's. However, one thing you have to pay attention to is the first bullet point is the infrastructure. Right now, our infrastructures and, and the technology infrastructure is in pretty bad shape. We have to start looking at that. Uh, when you go through the meeting minutes and, uh, we'll talk again with our next meeting, but, um, we're going to start touching on that as we develop the, uh, technology budgets going forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Porter?
Next week, I would ask the board to do a resolutions regarding reservations, um, these were, um, sincerely in cross-country coaches. Uh, we will have appointments of some professional substitutes, nurse in elementary and secretary in math. Um, we are also going to hopefully have a name to be placed, the Mountain View for our secretary. If you recall, uh, we had a person resign there, stayed in a position. Uh, we will hopefully have a name for you next week. Uh, we will also hopefully have a personal hair assistant substitute that we would like to add. Again, we need to put that in the process to put that name, um, on the agenda. In addition, uh, this Thursday is the Breakfast of Champions, um, at seven fifteen at the high school. Um, as well as the high school musical, Children of Eden is, uh, next, uh, this weekend, next weekend. And I'll make sure that if you've got ordered tickets, I should have them, um, the next week, um, so if you are going, you can attend. And we just noted the sixth grade campaign, six. And we just noted the sixth grade camp dates there in May. Um, I know Mrs. Bates is always looking for people to come and attend and enjoy the festivities, so if any of you want to take a vacation day and head up there for camp, um, let us know. Seriously, it's really a, a wonderful event, and, um, we need as part of the school, the students enjoying themselves, so, um, if you're able, please, uh, let us know.
Hopefully, there won't be any this year.
Hopefully, no one will.
Don't count on it.
Yeah. No, you may.
People were planned, we were looking at dates, and, right, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else to come before the board this evening? Thank you, I'm very thankful for your time.